Good evening, welcome to the January 9th, 2023 Board Meeting. I would like to ask you all to join us for a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We had a little confusion, we moved it to the correct side, Pam was informed by a public that, a Marine, that we had it on the wrong side, so we, apologies for that, we are good now. I would have Jesse Knight, please read the mission statement.
The Water of Skills Community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to ensure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thank you very much, Jesse, and now we are moving on to a board celebration tonight, and this is Shields' donation to East High School. And we have Representative Tim Moses here, and Aqui is our other contact on this, and the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education accept and acknowledge with gratitude the $2,500 donation from Shields to benefit athletic programs at East High School.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, and discussion, please, this is exciting.
Tim Moses is always one of my favorite people to visit at East High, so this is really exciting evening for Tim, and I look forward to hearing more from him about the $2,500 donation.
Thank you, Aqui, and good evening, school board members, and Dr. Smith. Shields, a good friend of mine, Jeremiah Matts, surprised me with a phone call, he reached out to me and asked me if we would be interested in a donation from Shields, and I never turn down donations, and so I was very grateful that he had reached out to me, and on behalf of the East High Athletic Department, I'd like for the school board to approve this donation from Shields, and again, we're very thankful and appreciative of this donation from Shields and Jeremiah reaching out to us.
For sure, do you have specific usages you're kind of looking at, or?
I know Christmas is over, so I'm still looking, I know our coaches are always in need of some things as far as meals for away games or different things like that, so I haven't really decided, yeah, we're just gonna see how it plays out and see what we need the most help with at this point, but nothing, nothing in particular right now.
Perfect, perfect, well, I think on behalf of the board, if you really let your friend know too, that we surely appreciate that, and we'll take donations anytime.
And he wanted to be here, but he just, he's got a very busy schedule, he couldn't make it, so we tried very, very hard to get Jeremiah here, but he just couldn't make it.
Well, please give him our thanks, and, yeah.
Yeah, and send us like a little note, let us know what your Christmas wish list ended up being.
Absolutely.
And your coat is nice, so we could all get those coats. He's a Trojan.
Yeah, on another side note, if you don't mind me saying, just want to remind everybody that Saturday is the East-West basketball game, yes, we got our East High Athletic Call of Fame ceremony going on that day, got some great inductees, got the 1974 basketball team going in, along with the 2003 state champion team, and along with Marcus Magnum, who, he's a director of special ed, I believe, over in Chicago, and Elsara Greer, so we got a great class, got a great day of events lined up, kick line performance, dance team performance, and yeah, it's gonna be a fun day, so please come out and enjoy a game of basketball and popcorn.
Yeah, that's right.
Yes.
Awesome, well, any comments from other board members for Mr. Moses?
Tickets are on sale for students, right?
Went on sale today.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, and by the way, Happy New Year to everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you for your contacts and what you do for students.
Love it, I love it, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carried seven zero, go get the money now, Tim.
Oh, he got it.
Good work, okay.
If we hadn't passed it, I don't know what he would have done.
We don't, joking, joking, okay, the next item on our agenda is information from individuals and delegations, this is the opportunity where those who wish to address the school board may do so. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less, Mrs. Arndorfer will hold up a yellow card when you have 30 seconds remaining, and a red card when your time has expired. At that time, I will ask you to conclude your public remarks. Please also keep your comments respectful and constructive, we are all here with the goal of trying to help our students, please also avoid criticizing the job performance of specific employees of the school district, personnel matters are confidential and must be handled through proper channels and not in a public forum. Finally, we provide this as an opportunity for public comments, but it is generally not a back-and-forth discussion, especially of items that are not on our agenda. At times, we will try to help if we can with information before or after the meeting, but we have to proceed with our board meeting agenda items. With that, I would invite anyone here tonight who wishes to address the board to please come forward to the microphone, put the green light on, and start by stating your name and your home address.
I see a green light, does that mean go?
You're good, you're good to go.
Good evening, my name is Shelley Smith, and my home address is 216 Oakwood Drive, Evansdale. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to address you and represent our community and serve our community, I'm a mom, I'm an East High alumni, I am currently assigned work at West High School, so I get to be in the halls of the Wahoarks very frequently, multiple times a day, a week, and I'm learning to love it as a Trojan on the inside, so it's a great experience. Two of my sons have graduated from East High, and currently, my youngest is a sophomore, hoping to graduate and move on to a lifelong career as my older two have. And I come to you with concern, I just want to serve as a representative, a mom that is worried about the safety and the welfare of our students attending East, and our teachers, and our staff working at East, it's no longer the safest building that I've known it to be, I'm concerned about the violence that has happened with students fighting other students, teachers feeling the need to intervene, teachers that I know and love that have taught my sons that would never intervene unless they felt someone's life was in danger, they're passive teachers, and they got assaulted and hurt. I was concerned about the communication, and since then, and asking for communication, I received it. I find great support from our administrators and our teachers, I just want to come to you and tell you, things are not safe for our students, and they're not safe for our teachers, I'd like to see the board take advanced discipline where needed, and I'd like to open myself up to be available to answer any questions or needs where I can provide greater insight and concern, so that we wrap around this together and help solve this together, so thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Jonathan Cox, 1008 Birch Avenue, Waterloo, Iowa. Now, this address, you're not gonna send anything to me, are you? Okay, okay, just want to make sure, hey, I'm here just like with Shelley about, just concerned as a parent, I have a son who goes to East, and he's a freshman, and one of the comments he have made is, you know, he said, hey dad, am I safe? Will I be safe here? And, you know, working in schools, myself, I've been at the high schools, and also currently now at the middle schools, that's a real concern of, as a parent, to come to the board and just mention, you know, the level of the heightened concern that I do have, it's not only for my son, but also the kids that are in our program that we are with, and also kids that are just attending school, so, you know, looking at it from a school safety standpoint, you know, if looking at, I don't know if you ever have discussed anything about metal protectors, detectors, that's something that, I'm originally from Springfield, Springfield, Illinois, and that's something that we had, and it prevented some serious things, I do think the level of violence that is happening, today's young folks just don't know when to quit, and so they escalate, and escalate, and escalate, so, you know, looking at also, you know, you know, what's the plan, you know, look at possibly looking at, and talking to some of the administrators of plan for the kids that want to learn, I think we've been talking too much about kids that are getting in trouble, making rules, regulations for them, but the kids that want to learn, you know, what's, what is the school district's plan for the kids that want to learn? I'm also here supporting the teachers, teachers here every day, it's a struggle, I've talked to some, and it's just sad, it's just sad on the state that the morale, I think there needs to be some morale building in all of our schools, so looking at the safety of our teachers, is there a plan for our teachers? And I think that needs to be under a little bit of discussion, and I think we need to more talk instead of being reactive, and become a little bit proactive about the solutions for safety, and I think that's so important, so I just wanted to mention that to you, thank you, support everything that you do, and, you know, yeah, let's stop.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Mr. Cox?
I love the Godzilla shirt, my son has one almost like it, so.
Thank you both, and we will be in contact, and is there anybody else in the audience tonight that wants to address the board? See no more, we will-
Move on to the consensus agenda, which tonight-
Which tonight consists of three items, item B is the minutes of the December 12, 2022 regular board meeting, item C, which is the personnel appointments and adjustments, and item D, which is the bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings. Are there any of these three items that board members would like removed?
Item C.
Item C, okay, we're good with B and D, okay, so all in favor of accepting item B and D? Please say aye. Moved to approve, B and D.
Sub moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carried seven zero. Now, we will move on to item C, and we need to get a motion for the personnel appointments and adjustments.
Sub moved.
Second.
And, let's see, who pulled that, Esther, okay?
Just had a question, seeing some of the resignations, the district sub building, where are we at with numbers for that, if we, are there any school, or what does that look like?
You mean the full-time buildings sub, is that what you're asking about?
Yeah.
Last check, and I, I'm only speaking for our elementary schools, I think there were at least three that have not been able to find one yet throughout the year, so I would have to, and I only know this because I was looking at it last week for, for something else, but that's, that's what I know, I'd have to double-check on secondary, so, and then, I have one item I actually need to change on here, so, one of the resignations reached out at the end of last weekend, has actually changed their mind, and they want to stay, so, it's under the classified resignations, Delilah, it's either Lulik or Lulich, okay.
So we're good at the secondary levels with those positions?
I would need to, I don't know, I'd need to check, I was just looking at elementary last week, so that's why I know, but I can, I can check secondary.
Okay, thanks.
And just, I know the new campus safety monitor positions have been posted, I see we have one higher, are they getting good applicants for those positions?
You know, I haven't checked into it yet, so, I mean, I typically don't unless principals have questions, or someone on my team has questions, but.
I move we amend the motion to exclude under resignations the last name under classified.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carried seven zero.
Now we gotta vote on the original?
Right.
That's right.
If we're done discussing, Stacy and you guys good down there? Okay, then all in favor of accepting the personnel appointments and adjustments? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carried seven zero, thank you very much, Anthony. Then we will move on to the item E, which is the West High Dance Team, which is going to be traveling to Nationals in Orlando, Florida, and we do have representatives here, Miranda is here, so she will be coming up, and Dr. Mohren can also, but the motion is that the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education approve travel for West High's Dance Team to Orlando, Florida, to compete in the DTU Dance Team Nationals from February 9th through the 13th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
And discussion, if you would like to give us a little overview of what, we've got a good package here, and we see the numbers, but just kind of tell us how the trip evolved, and if there's questions, we'll go ahead and shoot them back at you.
Yeah, absolutely, good evening, everybody, I'm Miranda, the head coach with West High Dance Team. We actually have a pretty incredible story to share with how we are able to attend Nationals this year, if approved, so, when we competed at State in December, I was actually approached after the award ceremony by the founder of the company who hosts Nationals, it's called Dance Team Union, her name is Laura King, she's the founder of the program, and she pulled me aside privately and said, not only did we love your team's performances today, but more so, we loved their integrity, how positive they were, how much they loved on other teams, how much they supported, just the environment of what State Dance is supposed to showcase, so she said, we loved it so much that we want to support you financially, and has provided us a scholarship to attend Nationals, so this is about a $20,000 package that we're receiving, completely paid for, so, this scholarship is covering their flights, registration fees, the hotels, everything that's included within that, some master classes and special training, some educational courses for myself, it really is an incredible package, this is the first year they've ever done this scholarship program, so we get to be that guinea pig team to attend, and we're really excited about that, this team really deserves it, so, like she said, it's a four-day, or a four-night, five-day competition to compete at a national level in Orlando, Florida, we leave on Thursday, February 9th, and we'll return on Monday, February 13th, so, the competition will last over three days, depending if we are requested to go to the finals, so between one and three days will be our competition days.
Really excited for you and the students, what do you expect them to learn, and how do you expect this trip to affect your program in the coming years?
Yes, that is such a great question, we, I watched this team receive a bid to Nationals for many years in the past, and immediately their brains go to, well, we don't have the money, so we can't go, these kids are kind of trained to believe that they don't have these opportunities available to them, so I think this is completely going to shift gears mentally for them, which is huge, that's something that, you know, as a program, we've been working to change the mental side first, because being good humans and being good people and kind of shifting these things is what's gonna make them succeed as dancers, so I really think being exposed to the highest level of competition is going to change the game for them, not only just getting them excited about what they love, but mentally, it's gonna shift them to believe that these opportunities are available, and that they're being seen for what they love and who they are.
Really, really excited for that bump for your program.
Thank you, we are too.
How many, how many teams will there be, do you know?
Oh, I do not know the final number, I would, I would say between, you know, 50 to 75, it's a pretty, pretty large competition, yeah.
And how many different classes of competition are, different events are there?
So they are split based on small, medium, and large varsity, and then within those three categories, they're split by the genre of dance that you compete in, so there is an array of categories.
Thank you.
We're also taking two soloists, so there is a solo competition as well, yeah.
Can you talk about the transportation and the decision, I see on here that you're flying there,
Yep.
But it's a bus trip back?
Yes, so-
And about, I'm sorry, and about what adults are going, if it's just you, or, because under volunteers, there weren't any-
Slide down.
Oh, next page. We have two chaperones coming with me, and then we have a couple parents who have already told me that they would like to join too, but that's kind of on their own, so, but for transportation, we have a bus that will take us to and from the airport, the company, it worked out best financially for the company that's providing this to us, to fly us out of Des Moines, and then fly us back into Chicago, so it's a different airport, but flight-wise, it worked out best for them, so we're gonna take a bus to drop us off in Des Moines, and then we'll return from Chicago, and there'll be a bus ready to pick us up and return home.
Tell us a little bit about the contest program, is it gonna be lyrical, or jazz, or hip-hop, or some of everything, or what are you preparing?
Yes, we are taking hip-hop, and then two of our soloists are also competing in the hip-hop division.
And is this your full team?
Yes.
That's going?
Yep.
Awesome, awesome, okay, well, we really would like you to come back and tell us how you did, and maybe bring-
Absolutely.
Some dancers, and, and let us know what they gleaned from the experience, that would be great, so.
We would love that, thank you.
Yeah, they could do a show for us. Yes.
Or a video, wouldn't they?
Yeah, a video would be good too, yeah, okay, so all in favor of approving the West High Dance Team to go to Florida, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carried seven zero, so you will be going, and we look forward to you representing our district and our school very, very much, so good luck.
Thank you, thank you for your time, everybody.
Thank you for all the extra time with the students.
Okay, that'll be awesome, the next item is Exhibit F, and that's on page 28, and that is the Essar Funding Vision to Learn, and we have Jen Hartman here to provide, and- Corinne Kroger, sorry, sorry, it wasn't on our sheet, apologizes, but the superintendent's recommendation is that the Board of Education approve the payment of $25,000 in Essar Funding to Vision to Learn to be used for vision care during the 22-23 school year.
So moved.
Second.
And discussion, exciting, it sounds.
It's very exciting, hi, everybody, I hope you're doing well, I'm excited to introduce Corinne Kroger, and we are fortunate, over the last five-plus years, to be able to partner with Vision to Learn, Corinne's over the state of Iowa, lives in Dubuque, so traveled here tonight to be with us and to share some more information, but we've had the opportunity to really serve all of our kids for the past five-plus years, to have screenings, eye screenings, and then on into an exam, and two pairs of free glasses for those kids that qualify, so thousands of students have been impacted, we've had some work with John Hopkins University that's wanting to do some more studying of, you know, what we're seeing as far as progress academically when kids can see. And so Corinne is here to visit with us a little bit about the program. But mostly, this is all funded throughout the state through grants. And we want to make sure that we're able to offer this to our kids as long as possible. Just this year, six schools are currently being screened and given exams. And so we have two middle schools and four elementary schools this year, but it's just on a rotating basis. So about every three years, kids get the opportunity to have their eyes checked. However, if a nurse would see that there is a need at a building that's not being served that particular year, we just take the kids to that school, screen them, and, and there's an exam. So it has worked out really well. So I'll turn it over to her and then if you have questions for us.
Thank you so much, Jen. And I apologize, I'm combing off of a little bit of a cold. I'm healthy, but my voice has taken a while to catch up. As Jen said, my name is Corinne Kroger. I'm the Iowa Regional Director with Vision to Learn. And I want to thank you all for having me here. Happy New Year. This is an exciting time for me to come. Actually, we just got off of, of holiday break and our first four day, four days back in operation. We're here in Waterloo at, we were at Fred Becker and Pointer Elementary School. So great way to start off the new year. As Jen mentioned, our partnership did begin back in the spring of 2017. But I wanted to just give a little bit of context about how it all really kind of came about because I think it's really important to understand how this work directly correlates to our kids in schools and their long-term academic outlook. So Vision to Learn is a national nonprofit organization. We launched in 2012 at the same time as the National Campaign for Grade Level Reading. And if you are familiar with Cedar Valley Readers, which I'm sure all of you are, you have a local campaign coalition here that is working towards strategies to help support kids within the school setting, but even before school, after school, and beyond. And so back in 2016, we actually started conversations here in Waterloo with the Cedar Valley Readers Group, Operation Threshold, Unity Point Hospital, and a variety of other community stakeholders. And part of that conversation was to really take a look at the types of barriers that kiddos were experiencing within the academic setting specifically around health. And at that same time, we were doing the same work out in Dubuque. And vision was an area that there really wasn't a lot of solutions to make sure that kids, once they got that screening, they could go on and get an eye exam. And so in Dubuque, we piloted this program out of the, the national office and started with three school districts. And from there, we started to expand. Waterloo was one of our next pilot communities that we came into. And really with a goal of reducing barriers for families, for their students who need that, that vision care. Roughly 80% of what a child learns between their birth and 12 years, 12 years of age is visual. And so it's really very important to make sure that our kiddos are receiving that vision care so we can catch anything early on and get them that tool, their pair of eyeglasses, so they can be successful. Outside of that, the state of Iowa has a mandated vision screening, which says that upon entering kindergarten and upon entering third grade, you need to have your eyes screened. So that would be like the eye chart that you see. You could go to your pediatrician, you can get your eye screened there. But beyond that, there is no follow-up. There isn't an audit that's, that provides any solutions around kids who once they're identified as needing an eye exam, there's no solution that really bridges that care to them. And it becomes a major challenge for kids who live in underserved areas, who maybe don't have insurance, who don't have transportation, or mom and dad don't have the means to be able to take off of work and then take their child to an appointment. And we also have lots of areas where there aren't providers that are accepting Medicaid and can provide that service. So we launched this program in 2017. We started with five elementary schools. As Jen has mentioned, we have provided over 5,000 vision screenings within the district. When we first started, it was a partnership with the Public Health Department because there was a contract with the Public Health Department and Waterloo Schools for their nursing services. So we had that partnership. But since then, we have taken on the vision screenings. We're able to go into a building using our Wellchalance Spot Screener. We can screen about 400 students in one day versus when the nurses were having to screen, it would be kind of spread out over a two, three week period. So we can screen those kids in one day. And then any student who needs an eye exam in those eligible buildings would then receive communication going home. And they'd be provided with opportunities or options that would say, if you have a local provider, please make and, and schedule that appointment with your local provider. If you don't have a local provider but need assistance, you have the opportunity to participate in Vision to Learn. So then our mobile vision clinic comes directly to the school. It is a retrofitted van. It has got all of the optometric, state-of-the-art optometric equipment with a licensed Iowa optometrist and a certified optician who does the pre-screening. And any student who has that eye exam, if they need glasses, they select from over 200 frame choices, which is also what is really unique about our program. A lot of times, if you have special insurance or if you have Medicaid, you have fewer options with your frame selection. And so because of our national partnerships, we're able to source a really large frame kit for our kids, and they're really fun. We've got really cool white frames in our kit, the clear frames, all of that. That's like the best part of, of our beginning of our year is picking out the frames. So the kids get to pick their glasses and then two weeks later, we send an optician back into the building and we do education. We fit every student with their pair of glasses. One pair stays at the school and one pair goes home with the student. So if a student loses or breaks their glasses, they can go to their school nurse, check out that pair of glasses, and they have it for learning time. We also warranty their glasses. So if they go through both pairs, they still get one-year warranty on one pair of glasses. So it is a very unique program and opportunity for our students. Like Jen was saying, we are currently underway this year. We, we serve the elementary buildings. We also serve five of the middle schools. And we look at ways to partner over the summer months as well. That is an opportunity for us. Our program has served almost 14,000 students within the state of Iowa since we launched in 2016. And I just want to highlight the, the partnership we've had with this district has been tremendous. The building administrators, and I mean the principals, the front office support, and the school nurses have been phenomenal. They really know their students, they know their families, they have been awesome communicators. And so really, between the district and our organization, we work very closely. And we've had tremendous amount of success. And I just want to thank you and I want, I want to thank Superintendent Smith for, you know, your, your team really has done a tremendous job. So with that, I'll turn it over for, for follow-up questions. I'm sure I didn't say everything, so.
So what percentage of, I guess, maybe two-part question here, what percentage of our kids that we examine, your group examines, do not realize they have a vision issue?
So that's a great question. The national average, when you provide a vision screening for a student, the nat, the national average is about 20% of those kids would need an eye exam. And that's been kind of the Iowa average as well over the past six years. I was just telling Jen though, looking at our data for this year, we're actually about 24% referral rate. And in some buildings, even higher than that. Of the students we then examine, the national average is 80% would need a pair of eyeglasses. We have some buildings that are over 90%. And I can follow up. I do regular data reports to Jen that really breaks down all of our building numbers. So that would be available to you. I do it on a semester basis if you wanted more of the detail.
Be curious too, now like, of the ones that need a vision, I mean, obviously some that maybe already have glasses that are, that they're, just their eyes have changed. But how many kids just don't realize that they need glasses at all?
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a pretty high percentage.
Yeah.
Even the kiddos that we have in glasses, and this is something our organization evaluates on an annual basis. We really want to be mindful of the local provider, making sure that we are following any current treatment plans. And, which is why when we have a student come on, we have a series of questions and things like that we go through. We actually take their glasses and we look at the prescription. We also talk to the nurses to kind of get a little back history on those kids. But a lot of times, those kids that are in glasses are in glasses that are old or their prescription has changed.
Right.
But we have had, we've had some unique situations with kids coming on with using Legos, holding their glasses together, duct tape, electrical tape. They've borrowed glasses from big brother, big sister, mom or dad. So it's, this program is very humbling because a lot of times, I think our kiddos, they don't know that they can't see clearly and so they can't articulate it. But then also, some of our older students, they know how much a pair of glasses is. They know it's expensive. And so they may not want to say, I need another pair of glasses or I broke my pair of glasses. And so it's, it's, it's such important work. I love that I get the opportunity to, to help with this every single day. And, you know, so I know we put forth this consideration for funding. I did want to say, and Jen touched on it, our program is funded through philanthropy, but we also have a path for sustainability. We are credentialed through the two MCOs here within the state of Iowa. Once Molina begins healthcare services in July one, we will put in our credentialing packet to get established with that third MCO. So any eligible student that we are able to bill benefits for, we can submit for those reimbursements. But this academic year, I've raised $76,000 for the Waterloo Schools to support this program. So this additional funding will just help us to serve more and take us into summer and then even into next fall.
Do you think the numbers went higher with COVID, with kids not getting checkups probably?
Yes, we, we did see some of that. It started to kind of come back down and, and level out. But we are seeing a higher, like I said, we're seeing a higher referral rate in terms of kids who are screened and need an eye exam than what we've had. And we work across 13 counties. Des Moines is our largest district. Waterloo is our second largest district. And so those are two good comparisons for us, and we're really seeing that uptick in our, in our averages.
Yeah, no, I appreciate what you say because sometimes you don't know what you don't know.
Yeah.
What you think you see is normal, but you don't know because you've got no comparative to it, so.
Yep.
Is the increase in, in screen time part of it?
So there are some preliminary.
That's what my eye doctor has told me about my kids.
Yes, so there are some preliminary studies that are out there. Hopkins has put one out. The National Eye Institute has also released some studies on this. And there's a few other journals that have recently been published. Screen time, definitely. So nearsightedness is definitely one of the conditions that is impacting our kiddos. But I also, from, we're seeing a lot of first-time kiddos. So that means a lot of kids who've never been to providers and later on, which is why our program serves K through 12. There's a lot of services around K through five currently. I mean, not a lot, but there's more than, once you get to middle school and there's more than what there is in high school in terms of all the mandates around screenings and so on. And so we really try and, and make sure that we're, we're serving all of those kids to help identify. Because once we start to get into those older age groups, their, their health conditions are a little bit more significant.
So what are the six schools that you're in again?
So it's Fred Becker, Pointer, Irving, Lou Henry, George Washington, Carver, and I'm missing the fifth, sixth, fifth one for this year. Bunker, sorry about that.
So how does a high school student get in contact to be able to have access?
So we, I work really closely with Karen Macham. She's the, she oversees the nurses' program. And so it's kind of funneled through her or Jen, or even just sometimes the building nurses, they'll reach out. And they'll say, I have a student, we're seeing some, some potential vision problems. And then it's up to me and my program coordinator and we just coordinate a, a way to get them over to a building that we're going to be at. And we do, we do that a lot.
So any given school, say elementary school, how often is there a comprehensive screening?
The initial vision screening or the eye exam.
The initial screening.
So the state mandate is kindergarten and third grade.
Yeah.
When we go in and provide the vision screening, we serve, or we screen every grade in the building. So we're doing that, we're in the Waterloo Schools on an annual basis. But for like this year, we're screening only the six buildings for this year. And then next academic year, it would be a, a new list of buildings that we would be at. And it's primarily due to our current capacity. We are currently recruiting more doctors. We'd like to purchase a second clinic so we can expand our service to serve more kids.
But is every two or three years then that you would expect to be in a
Correct.
the same school? Is there any correlation with the, is there a long-term trend to need more corrective services? Or I guess my second, second part of that is, is there any correlation that you know of between nutrition and?
Yes. So nutrition definitely has an impact. Diabetes also is directly correlated to vision health. I don't have all of the research on that, but yes, those, those are things that are correlated to eye health. Genetics is a big player in your vision health and determining whether or not you might need eyeglasses. So for instance, if, you know, your biological mother or father, if they wore glasses, chances are that the child would need glasses is likely, which is why it's recommended that vision screenings happen early and often, especially during those developmental stages of life.
So is there a close enough correlation that we ought to use that to specify foods in our lunch program? I mean, we can't, we can't depend on students getting any particular satisfactory nutrition out of school in many cases, so.
I'm, I'm not aware of any research that would point towards any type of specific
Okay.
nutrition or meal plan that would help with that. I, I, any of the research that I have come across has been much more generic.
Not even carrots.
Right.
Is there, so you're, you're staffing, one of your limitations, I'm able to do more than one building? And do the nurses assist with the screenings? Who assists with that? Building nurses at all or?
Yeah, so the Vision to Learn, we actually, our optician is, is the individual who conducts the screening, but we go classroom to classroom. So typically, the school nurse is our main point of contact when, once we're in the building. And so sometimes it's the school nurse that will be the runner and take us room to room. But a lot of times, it's the classroom teacher. So when we're going room to room, we're working very closely with that classroom teacher. They're taking, they're helping us take the notes, but our clinician team is conducting the screening. And then once the screening is completed, we sit down with the school nurse to share the data and to come up with our list of kids who need the eye exam. And then we work jointly for the parent communication. And so there is a, a significant lift on, on the building in terms of the, the various phases, in terms of communication directly to the parent or caregiver. But we have been able to remove some of the capacity burden by doing the screenings ourselves. And so the nurses aren't having to do that.
I wonder, is anything we could coordinate with our careers or center of students to do some help with screening or stuff?
To shadow it?
Yeah, or support some.
I would say on exam day, I think that would be where it would be welcome. Having a runner in the building calling the students down to come to the clinic. That's typically where we see the support needed. Because nurses are so busy with dispensing medication and dealing with just kind of on-the-fly situations that happen on a daily basis. So they often get called away to the office. And so if there isn't a dedicated volunteer or runner, that's, that's where we see a little bit in, in decreased capacity.
But it would be cool for kids to actually shadow the, the optometrist or the technician.
Potential learning pathways there within our nursing program or something.
Yeah, that or at our dispensing. We call them glasses. Yeah, that or at our dispensing. We call them glasses celebrations. Those are our big glasses parties. That would be great too, because there's education. They can see how the technical side of it, of fitting the glasses and, and how we use our equipment during that process.
So what, what's the approval process then? If you identify a student as, I'm guessing there's no approval needed in order to do the screening?
So we send out pre-communication prior to the screening to every single, the household of every single student that will receive the screening. And at that time, the family has the opportunity to decline services. Once that happens, then we go forward with our vision screening and the exam. But before the exam, we do a second round of communication that goes home, just letting parents know, okay, your child does need an eye exam. Vision to Learn is coming, providing this eye exam. But because we have an opt-out process, that's, that's how that works.
And then the last step of actually approving the fitting of the glasses, is that a third?
So that would be the, the optician, which is the, the clinician that's on the clinic doing the fitting. They do that with the child. So the child gets to pick their glasses and they have that support from the clinician. We don't have parents come for that part of it. And, and really, it, it goes really well. The kids like to have their freedom and independence in selecting those frames and our team really does help kind of guide them. We make sure that they're getting a frame that's appropriate for the prescription and their face and potential growth.
Thank you. Sounds like a very good service.
And I wanted to thank you too. When I was in elementary school in Waterloo, it was the, the RN that alerted my parents that I needed corrective lenses. And at that time then, it was a, well now you have to go somewhere and it's two hundred dollars for the glasses, not counting the exam. And then you didn't have the money to change them every year then either, when your eyes change. So thank you for raising the money. Thank you for making a commitment to our kids to keep doing this. It really does matter.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
And, and I just had a quick question. So if a child would be determined to have, you know, precursor to glaucoma or precursor to, you know-
Great question.
Yeah. What, what do you do in those situations?
So we do have some students where we need to refer on for additional care. We have relationships with Cedar Valley Medical Specialists and a variety of other local providers here within the community. We work with those nurses then for that communication. But any student, any student who has a referral, our optometrist is calling that family directly. We use translation services. Sometimes we'll get the district involved if we need to have a school coordinator help us with that communication. But we make that contact first to make sure we can answer questions and explain exactly what our physician feels is going on and really reiterating the importance of that follow-up eye exam. Once a student then goes on for that follow-up eye appointment and they have that updated prescription, they can send that to us and we still make them the glasses.
And then do you keep all the way up till they're out of high school? You keep records?
Yes. So we, we are a health-based organization. We follow HIPAA because of the district and our relationship. We follow your FERPA guidelines. And then, yes, we have all of our electronic medical records database. And we actually just launched our brand-new software this fall. And it was built custom for our organization to really do what we would like it to do. And it's, we've got a great relationship with this district too. I work with Brad McCullough and we do some disaggregated data sharing. So then you can follow your students to see that, that all of the kids who've gotten an eye exam, you can look at them in your infinite campus and you can say, okay, they're receiving behavioral service support. They had a dental screening. They had a vision screening and an eye exam. So we have built that into our relationship over the course of our five-year partnership. So that, that data piece is really important.
Right. Awesome. And seventy-six thousand dollars, that's just amazing. So thank you-
Thank you.
-for your individual work and raising that money because that, that just goes a long way to help our kids. I mean, what we're giving you is a quarter of that, you know, so we really appreciate your, your philanthropy efforts of getting that money for us, so.
Well, I appreciate you all. Thank you so much.
Okay. Any other questions from board members? Okay. All in favor of approving the payment? Please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries six zero. And thank you very much for coming-
Thank you.
And we really appreciate your knowledge and your, what you told us. So very informative.
Well, I brought my freshmen in high school, so this was a good experience for them as well, so.
Yeah, they're, they're both looking pretty excited. Thank you again. Yeah.
Nice.
Okay. Awesome. We're getting towards the end, so you know, if you guys want to leave. Item G is our next item on the agenda and this is the superintendent's recommendation that the Board of Education accept the recommendation from the Facilities Committee and approve the purchase of playground equipment for Kingsley Elementary School at a cost of one-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand, one-hundred dollars as presented.
So move.
Second.
And we'll have discussion tonight. Zach Kelly, our Director of Operations, is off not feeling too well tonight. So we are going to have rely on the expertise of our three facility members, which is Lyle and India and Jessie, to, any questions that we have on this? And if those three can't answer, we'll go to Zach tomorrow.
Okay.
So which, okay, did we say, do we vote or, okay.
No, you're good.
The, um, the playground, it says it's thirty years old. Is that the big kid's side or the little kid's side? I don't know what south is. I'm sorry. My brain doesn't work like that.
It's the big kid's side.
The big kid's side.
Yes, Zach and I went over this like five times because I'm like, okay, I'm sorry for being like really dumb, but which side is it on?
Right, okay.
It's the back one.
Okay.
It's not the corner, it's not the triangle. It's the back one.
It's the big, okay, it's the big kid's side. Okay. So like when I was a parent there, the PTO purchase, I think it was the little kid's side, right? So this, the equipment on the left is the one that is the thirty-year-old. And it really, I didn't know it was that old, but okay. Just wanted to get it in my head. Thank you.
Yeah. You know, in nineteen, or in two thousand, basically, we started the replacement of all elementaries. And I think in every case, except Kingsley, a new playground was part of the new school. But Kingsley was a total remodel instead of a replacement. So it differed in that way. And the playground was, was left untouched at the time. So that's why Kingsley is kind of unique. All the other playgrounds are newer. And so this is the oldest one now. And that's why it's being proposed to be, to be replaced.
Were there multiple bids requested for this or?
I believe there was, but I, I'm not, I don't recall that.
I don't recall that either. Do you, Jessie?
I mean, typically I think the competition can sometimes bring a better price or I, just, so just wondering that. Maybe we can get that from Zach tomorrow. And then all-
Multiple bids? This is purchase.
It's purchased through a consortium.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, it's not a-
Yep. So it's not a bidding process?
No.
Okay, okay. And then thirty-two weeks after the order. So is that pretty typical?
Right now.
Yeah, right now. Typically, no, but in today's environment, it tends to be.
It probably will not be installed this summer, but a year from this summer, but we have to-
You're probably looking at-
Approve it now.
Yeah. Probably look at it next, it could be next summer unless they do it in a break there.
My guess is it's a year from this coming summer.
Yeah.
Because it has to be installed in the summer, correct? Yeah.
I don't know if you can get it done over a spring break or not, you know, but you're so close to summer by then anyway.
Yeah.
What kind of warranties are there on this stuff? Is there, do they come fix for a certain amount of time if something breaks?
Some or some, is it, you know?
But there is.
Typically there is.
There's something. I don't know what it exactly is. It's-
Yeah. I don't know what it is, but the consortium with, I mean, there's a, you know, a whole slug of rules on safety and what you can have and-
Yeah, I mean, it's really-
You can't have the whole-
I don't want to, I don't know what a consortium is, so I'm just kind of nodding, but okay.
You can't have the slides and the merry-go-rounds and all the fun things, you know, we used to have.
Basically it's-
You can't have Rocket Park anymore.
Right.
Basically, consortium, just basically we're a budget district or kind of work together or like AEA to buy, have, buy leveraging power. So we got more schools buying from the same to get more prices.
So it's all embedded. Gotcha. Thank you.
So it's kind of a standard design.
And what will happen to the old equipment? Do we know?
What will happen?
They take it? The, okay.
This is really nice. I, I really like the design.
Yeah.
Because it's a weird space there. So this will fit it well.
Any other questions then? All right. All in favor of approving the playground at Kingsley? Please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries seven zero. And now this brings us to our last item on the agenda tonight is Exhibit H. And it is the superintendent's recommendation that the Board of Education approve the quote from H2I group in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred dollars for the Central Middle School Pool Bleacher Project as outlined. And again, we will rely on our three facility members for, and Pam also, sorry, Pam is also up to date on this. So can I have our motion? Thank you. And a second. Thank you. And discussion.
Yeah, these, these-
Original bleachers, right?
I think they were the original bleachers. Although that area was remodeled, I don't know, twenty years ago. So it may be twenty years ago, but the, the issue is twofold as I understand it. One is, uh, they don't easily retract and push back. And that space is using, is used frequently for what they call dry land training. So that, they have to push them back every time. And the, the other thing is not only are they, you know-
They really don't have a walkway, a dedicated walkway like bleachers.
They don't have a walkway and then for, for people of my age, there's no handrails. And, you know, when you're walking up the bleachers, so it's, I think it's time in almost all our cases to get handrails in so someone walking up has something to hold on to other than just trying to jump from row to row.
Be ADA compliant too, so we have spots there for that.
Well, and it just makes sense with everything we're doing.
They've been grandfathered in so far, but at some point in time, you just kind of have to, have to provide the-
What was the timeframe? Did we just, I forgot the timeframe that we were going, installation? Did they?
I don't.
I thought it was-
And is this again the consortium or?
No, not the consortium.
So we have, across the district have gone with this Irwin telescopic. And we have, just to make that equal with all of our buildings.
Become our standard.
So it's, yeah, it's our standard. And H2I has been who we have worked with a number of times for bleacher projects. And lead-
Just going forward though, I'd kind of like to see if we can get other bids. I mean, just in the nature of competition, I, I think it could behoove us to try to get another bid for the same product. I mean, different companies probably have it. Just my two cents.
Yeah, I don't know. Is this a sole bid? I'm, all we see is the one bid, but I'm not sure.
It was just the one.
Okay.
It was just the one, yes.
Yeah, we should probably solicit more than one, if, if there's more than one supplier.
I just think it's good business. I mean. Okay. Any other questions then regarding the bleachers? We'll get those answers to us. And all in favor then of approving the fifty-eight nine for the bleachers, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carried seven zero. That is the end of our action items.
The wonders of technology. Okay, so I have been texting Zach. Fifteen-week turnaround for the bleachers, fifteen-week per bleachers. Kingsley Playground would be installed in the fall, so fall of twenty-three. Warranty on playground is ten years.
Okay. Good.
Thank you.
All right, awesome. So we will start then with the superintendent's report.
Okay, just a few updates here. Central, students are in Central. Been out there a couple of times, sent you guys some updates. So far, so good. We're working on some things with the, it's a little, it's not too bad, the sound. When you're kind of up high looking from above, it doesn't sound too bad. When you get actually in the classrooms, there's a little bit of, kind of hear what is going on in the other classrooms. But those, those walls are a lot higher than I was expecting. You, a lot of you have toured that, but we're working on that, looking through some ideas on how we can dampen the sound. But overall, I've had a chance to just kind of informally talk with some teachers and so far relatively good, you know, given the circumstances. I watched their transitions a couple of different times, like going to and from lunch. They've got a pretty good system in place. Staff are actually walking the kids to lunch, which is helping things out. So anyways, I feel pretty good. Our, I, I've already given Zach a lot of credit, as long as, as well as Matt. Just, just how much they moved and over break is pretty incredible. They moved the whole building. And just the technology that was needed, I kind of underestimated how much the wiring, the, the Promethean boards, all that stuff that needed to be done. So it's really incredible what our team did to pull that off. So been really hap, really happy with that. Dress code is going well so far. The, the feedback I've gotten has been about ninety-nine percent positive, maybe one percent questions. And really when I speak with the kids, the kids have been, you know, I've just, they come up to me in the hallway and they're like, "Are you the guy who changed the dress code?" I'm like, "I, I mean, kind of," and they're high-fiving me and that sort of thing, so. Uh, but, but so far, so good, even from hearing from staff. We had our first jean day on Friday and overall, the, the feedback was very positive, so. But we will still, we're still gonna, like I said, we're committed to getting feedback throughout the year and seeing what, what small tweaks or big tweaks need to be made. Tomorrow night is Leader Valley Ten Year Celebration. I haven't, I was, was I here when it started? I must have been, yes. But yeah, it's ten years have flown by. It's at the WCC tomorrow night. Five o'clock is the hors d'oeuvres hour or half hour with our WCC students serving those. And then a presentation from five-thirty to six-thirty. Last but not least, I know Sue's going to go over the important dates, but this Saturday, there's a, there's a change in time of the basketball games, the east-west game on, at east. You heard earlier from Tim about the Hall of Fame induction, the dance team performance, all that stuff. Really cool thing. Just, I was double-checking to make sure I saw this right. West boys are ranked as of this week. They're top ten. West boys, west boys are ranked in four A. And the east boys, was it right when we got back, when they beat Cedar Falls?
Yes.
So a huge, I don't think they've won against Cedar Falls in-
Seventeen tries.
Seventeen tries. So, so we're seeing some really good thing. I mean, some, some exciting things. In addition to the dance team, in addition to some of, you know, the, the cybersecurity team, in addition to a lot of the, a lot of those things going on. We're seeing some really good things on the, on the basketball court. So that'll be exciting for Saturday.
So these times are correct though that are on here?
Yeah. What time is the game?
Yep. I just checked our school today and that was what they had on there as well.
One and two thirty.
One and two thirty.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. And tonight we will start with Stacy.
I didn't have much. I just wanted to say again how happy I am that things are going well with the dress code and to wish our high school kids good luck with finals. So study and do your best. So thanks.
Jessie?
I'll echo what Jared's saying. I had a chance to stop out at the Career Center Tuesday before Central got there. And it, you know, it was pretty neat walk up above and seeing they were still working way there, you know, finishing touches there. Nice to see the pathway open underneath there too, you know, getting to the field. Been kind of a, little bit of a challenge sometimes for bringing stuff in. So talked to a few parents. Everybody seemed to be, seemed like they're handling it well, so.
Hopefully it'll give us, you know, a little bit of patience as we work through, you know, the next year, you know, it's, it's, it's not the perfect environment, but it's, uh, I think a very good alternative to, you know, be able to get the end goal of remodeling the rest of the building. So, yep.
Thank you. India?
I just want to acknowledge, I know this is before the holidays, but, um, I was able to attend the Battle of Waterloo and I just, it was my first time, cause.
First time?
First, I know, I know. But I just want to say, I know, listen, I'm not a wrestler at all, um, if it's, unless it's WWF or whatever, but. It's totally different. But I just wanted to acknowledge, uh, first Pam giving me the opportunity to be able to volunteer for that event because it was pretty amazing. Like for 12 years, it's been in my backyard. Shame on me for not attending this. It was so well. It was so, so well laid out and the sheer number of hands that took to put that together, but it was just amazing. It was so well done. And so I just want to say thank you, Laura Lee, thank you, Mr. Williams, thank you for being my partner in crime and being able to do that. It was really very cool. No, it's okay. But I also want to acknowledge the young ladies on the floor who were wrestling. Amazing. They were doing a great job. And there were a lot of young ladies who were doing amazing things on that floor. So I, I was really impressed with the whole thing. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. So thank you for allowing me to have that opportunity. Um, I do have a question for Anthony. So this is a, I'm so excited that we're getting new people into our buildings and into, um, positions. So my question though is, I just wanted to be mindful of how at the board we approve positions before they actually in their positions. Um, so, because I do, people do comment about that. And so I know there is a, a certain lead time or a time that they are, get hired and then they kind of, we kind of have to wait before we can approve that. So I guess, I don't know where the protocol has changed or what the protocol may be, but could you kind of just talk about that?
You know, I, I thought with our classified positions that we aren't necessarily waiting for them to be approved at the board table before they get started. Sometimes what hangs us up is getting people here in a timely manner for orientation. So that, that could be the hangup, but I can double-check on that, that piece for you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Esther?
It always matters which, which way we start. But I'm glad I had some other stuff besides the Battle of Waterloo, but I truly enjoy that. Loved my position. We got a chance to watch some wrestling as well. So it was awesome. And that was my first time going as well. I'm, I'm a basketball guy, so my winter months are, it's just basketball, but the wrestling was, it was amazing. It was amazing.
Be careful how positive you are. You might be called on again next year.
I'm looking forward to it. Yeah.
Please, wow, I look forward to it. Thank you.
In the same spot, or a spot where I can see the wrestling. I was, I was doing double, I was doing double duty. So I, I was working and looking. So, yeah, it was, it was amazing. Um, just a couple of things. Um, I was, uh, contacted by the family of Danae Nash, who was a, um, 2018 graduate of East High School. She tragically lost her life. Um, she was a basketball player at East and she, um, earned a scholarship to Kansas City Community College. And she also played at DMAC College as well. But the family is asking, um, those that are attending the East-West game on Saturday to wear purple. They want to do a, a purple out for that game. Um, they have started a foundation for Danae. And let me get my notes and read it. Um, they started the Danae Nash Purple Hearts Foundation. And the foundation will benefit Waterloo schools, Waterloo basketball camps and programs, also the Iowa Donor Network. And they have a scholarship fund that's set up through the Waterloo Community Foundation. Um, and this is establishing Danae's honor. So during the East-West game, um, at East this weekend, um, they're asking the community to come out and support, uh, both schools. But, but wear purple in, in the process, um, in remembrance of, of that amazing young lady that I had an opportunity to, to know personally as well. So, um, just putting that out there. Um, also, I'm happy to announce that, um, the Impact Foundation is bringing back to the Cedar Valley the Young Gentlemen's Botillion. So we're, um, want to highlight the, the educational and community accomplishments of African-American young men that'll be graduating high school this spring. Um, so the event is actually on April 22nd. So I'll be talking a little bit more about that. Um, but we have a good lineup, a bunch of professional development for the young people. So it'll be amazing and awesome. Um, and it's made, gonna be made possible by a grant through the Black Hawk County Gaming Association. So I want to thank that, that entity as well, uh, for all their support of the community as well. So look forward for that.
Where, where will that be?
It will be at Electric Park Ballroom will be the actual event.
And what students get to go to that again?
African-American male students that have achieved a certain GPA educational, and they have to sign up as well. So they have to sign up and, and be, um, approved.
Okay.
So this is a little, little criteria, but, um, just something to acknowledge their educational, uh, achievements and, and community achievements as well, so.
Great. Keep us informed.
Oh, I will. I will.
And can they give to the scholarship just through the foundation if somebody wants to?
And I actually sent it, um, I was up here and I remembered it, so I actually sent it to all the board members. I'll, I'll get it to you, Dr. Merhorn, and you, Anthony as well, and Pam. So I'll send it to you guys too. But I sent it to all the board members already.
Thank you.
So just check your, your Waterloo School email.
Okay. All right, Janelle. Thank you, Esther.
Thanks to everyone, kids, parents, um, teachers, parents, everyone that makes the school district great, because it is great.
Thank you very much. And Lyle?
Yep. Happy New Year, everyone. Um, glad to see a couple of people felt comfortable coming during our public speak time. We always welcome, everybody's welcome. And we're listening. Uh, and then, um, yeah, in terms of the Central, um, during the, uh, soft open house or that day, it was, it was interesting to see that Ross and the whole staff seemed to be excited. And I think that, that kind of leadership is very helpful in those situations. So, um, I appreciate that. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. And I just wanted to piggyback too. I wanted to thank Shelley and Jonathan for coming tonight. I wanted them to also know that we will send a follow-up email. Um, but we are, um, working on safety within our buildings. And that is, it's a huge priority for us. And, um, we have approved campus, uh, an additional campus safety position in each of the middle schools and, and the high schools. So, um, we're just waiting to hire those, um, people to come in, which hopefully that will be relationship-building. And also, um, an eye on, um, every situation on, that is happening in the schools. We also have got vape machines in the building, so, um, we are working. It's a multi-ordered, multi-pronged effort. And again, with timeframes, it's taking longer to get things. But to, to attack these, um, we appreciate your suggestion about the metal detectors. That has been considered. There's pros and cons with that too. So, um, but it is something that is at the forefront. And we want kids to feel safe going to school. So, um, just appreciate you coming and, and sharing your comments on that.
Is the, is the state assessment completed? The safety assessment?
Assessments?
Yes. Um, those are completed. And I asked Dan to kind of give.
I mean, Dan and Mike were talking about what, um, what potential, like we talked through whether or not the vape detectors could be.
Whether, we talked through whether or not vape detectors would fall under the $50,000 per building. So that's some things we're investigating. But yes, those were done, I want to say October for the vulnerability assessments. Yes. But you might be asking us about looking at the doors. We talked about too, what options we have. I know that was a suggestion you brought up.
Yeah.
That's, that's a goal for us for this month to see.
So basically, we're in the process of, uh, reviewing and that plan and implementing what we think is most effective. Is that where we're at?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think safety is ongoing always, you know, so.
But, but this was a special help from the state, different set of eyes looking at it.
No, I appreciate that.
Comprehensively and saying, you know, this, you have a vulnerability or.
Yep. Oh, no, I think it's a great idea. So. And then on Monday, we, um, will celebrate Martin Luther King Jr. Day. And I just want to, um, encourage people to use your day off and your time off to do some, do something good for the world around you. And whatever that may be, and whatever world you live in, do something to make it better. So with that, could we have a motion to adjourn?
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carried. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.